All right. Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the San Jose City Council for the afternoon of September 23rd. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Sorry, Kamai, Campos, Tordeos, Cohen, Ortiz.
President.
Mulcahy.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelaus.
Here.
Casey, Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Kamai.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, if you're able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Robert Davis, Vice President of Community Relations for the San Jose Earthquakes, and Councilmember Candelaus will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce today's invocation speaker, Robert Davis, of the San Jose Earthquakes. Robert brings an extensive background to the work that he does in our community. He started working with the San Francisco Giants, and throughout the years continued to work in various roles with the Sacramento River Cats, Oakland Raiders, now Las Vegas Raiders, and San Diego Padres. Now, we're fortunate to have him bring his talents and charm to the San Jose Earthquakes. Robert and I share the same passion for sports and the belief that engaging our youth through recreation program programming is an invaluable investment. We agree that sports like soccer or football have the innate ability to connect communities and transcend borders and language barriers. I had the pleasure of working with Robert and other community leaders and partners to kickstart the Saturday Night Lights pilot program in my district earlier this year. The program offered over 225 middle and high school students a safe, supportive, and empowering space through free footsaw games in partnership with our San Jose police officers. We also offered mental health resources, and it proved what a collaboration looks like, where we both serve our youth and our families in a strong public-private partnership. I want to thank Robert and the San Jose Earthquakes for creating change in our community through sport. Now, please join me in welcoming Robert as he leads us in today's invocation. Robert, welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff members, and members of the community. As the Councilmember shared, my name is Robert Davis, and I serve as the VP of Community Relations for the Quakes and also lead our Quakes Foundation. Firstly, definitely wanted to say thank you so much to the Councilmember for the work that him, Teddy, Carolina, and Haley for your dedication for the work that you do in District Eight and for supporting Saturday Night Lights, which we like to call SNL, and for giving me the chance to speak with you today on behalf of the foundation. And I'll be quick. Our foundation focuses on improving youth, health, and fitness and fighting food insecurity, especially in communities where the need meets the love of soccer. Earlier this year, we piloted Saturday Night Lights presented by CalHope to advance these goals. On April 11th, in partnership with an incredible group of organizations and individuals, including the City of San Jose, Santa Clara County, Catholic Charities, La Vila Middle School, Evergreen Elementary School District, the San Jose Police Department, CUPD chief, and the District Attorney's Office, and many, many more, we launched the pilot at La Vila Middle School and Washington United Youth Center. For 10 weeks, youth came together for free Friday and Saturday evening footsaw, meals, and mentorship. Coaches Lino and Coaches Isaac led the sessions, and each week, the same four police officers at each site led coaching, playing alongside the kids, and building trust. Critical word. What made the program truly special was the collaboration behind it. More than 20 partners came together to make it happen, bringing energy, expertise, and heart from across San Jose. It's been inspiring to see leaders, many of whom grew up in these very same neighborhoods, giving back to their own communities. The results truly speak for themselves. As the Councilmember mentioned, over 225 youth had an opportunity to play. At La Vila, we saw an increase of 30% in attendance for youth who were involved throughout the course of the 10 weeks. Those same youth had zero disciplinary incidents during that time, and 100% of eighth graders who participated ended up getting promoted. At Wash, one young participant said, "I used to be scared of the cops. Now I talk to them like they're regular people." A parent told us, "This program helped my child see police differently, not as a threat, but as mentors." With the World Cup kicking off here in market just 263 days away, it's coming soon, we have a unique opportunity, and indeed, I would say a responsibility, to grow this work. In San Jose, as many of you know, evening footsaw isn't just a game. It's a tradition that brings families together, and it brings neighborhoods together as well, and it creates positive spaces for our youth. Together with our partners and as a city, we plan to expand Saturday Night Lights at our current locations and leverage the excitement of the World Cup to reach even more neighborhoods this year. As Quakes legends and Quakes Foundation leader Shay Salinas likes to say, "A soccer ball can change a life," and Saturday Night Lights is proof of that. So let's keep this work going, let's keep building community, and let's keep giving our youth every opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Really appreciate that invocation. Thank you, Councilmember Candelaus, for arranging today's invocation. I'll just say, I've seen Robert out in many of our districts doing important work with our youth, and I'm grateful to you, Robert, and our Quakes for how engaged you are in the community. So thank you once again. Let's move on to our ceremonial items. We'll start with Vice Mayor Foley. If you would join me at the podium, we will recognize Dan Roy.
Today, I'm honored to recognize Dan Roy on behalf of the San Jose City Council. Over the last two decades, our city has been incredibly fortunate to benefit from Dan's dedication as a volunteer City Hall docent. Dan began serving as City Hall docent in 2005 with his late wife, Harriet, welcoming employees to their new building and guiding visitors during the opening of the City Hall that we know today. Together, they devoted countless hours to greeting guests at council meetings, sharing vast knowledge, and answering questions with warmth and care. Dan's tours, always filled with laughter, curiosity, and fascinating stories, have helped thousands connect with San Jose's civic spaces and rich history. Just this past July, he led a group of District Nine summer campers through City Hall, which would become his final tour before announcing his retirement at the conclusion of the tour. My staff had the pleasure of following along that day and witnessed Dan sharing details about City Hall that even they and likely I, and probably all of us, never really knew. He pointed out the building's beautiful architecture and guided them to the 18th floor, offering a breathtaking panoramic view of San Jose. The tour concluded here in council chambers, where Dan spoke about the city's history and the importance of the mayor and council, though not before a stop at the Janet Gray Hayes Rotunda, where the group joyfully tested the echo of their voices with a moment to yell at the top of their lungs. I can just hear that, can't you? I feel especially honored that my District Nine residents were Dan's final tour. Dan, your passion, generosity, and dedication have touched countless lives. The City of San Jose celebrates the remarkable example you have set in volunteerism and civic engagement. Today, we proudly mark the close of two decades of devoted volunteerism and celebrate your lasting mark on our community. You have been a gem for our city, and we wish you all the very best, and don't be a stranger, we may need a tour guide. Dan, would you like to share a few words before Mayor Mahan presents you with this commendation? And also, I'd like to present you, from my team, a box of cookies from Gunther's. They're famous chocolate chip cookies.
Thank you very much. I don't have a lot to say, just want to thank you. It's been a wonderful experience. Been through four mayors here at City Hall. I came in, we came in at the original opening of the City Hall. My first tour was to the employees that came to this, that were moving over from the previous City Hall to this one. So it's been a long ride, it's been a fun ride, we've had a good time. It was the first time in my career that I got to work with my wife as co-equals. In fact, we had a team, and I was the captain of the team. And I knew I was the captain because, as Admiral, she said I was. So we had a great time to go for it, and we enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed watching the city grow and mature as we spend time. So just want to thank everybody here and all the members back here at the council for doing such a wonderful job on our city. So thank you very much. Bye.
Vice Mayor's suggestion, this commendation signed by the whole council. Thank you for your work here.
Thank you very much.
We really appreciate it.
All right. Now, Councilmember Ortiz and Councilwoman Candelaus, if you would join me at the podium, we will recognize Damian Trujillo. Damian, I think you get to come down, too.
Sorry, Damian, no cookies, but we do recognize you today. Today, I have the honor of presenting a commendation to someone whose voice, work, and leadership have left a lasting mark on San Jose and the Bay Area, and that is Mr. Damian Trujillo. Since 1996, Damian has served as a journalist with NBC Bay Area and as a host and producer of Comunidad del Valle, the Bay Area's longest-running public affairs program, now on Telemundo 48. Through his storytelling, Damian has uplifted voices that too often go unheard: farmworkers, immigrants, and underrepresented communities who struggles and contributions deserve to be seen and valued. Growing up in Greenfield and working in the agricultural fields with his family, Damian gained a deep understanding of the struggles and resilience of working families. These experiences shaped his commitment to truth and representation, driving him to highlight stories that might otherwise go untold. Over the course of his remarkable career, Damian has earned 18 Emmy nominations and countless awards for his powerful journalism. And just this year, he was inducted into the National Association of Hispanic Journalists Hall of Fame, a well-deserved recognition of his excellence and his role as a mentor and role model for future generations. Therefore, it is my honor, alongside the mayor and city council, to present a commendation to Mr. Damian Trujillo in recognition of his visionary leadership in journalism and extraordinary service to our community. Damian, thank you for using your platform to tell our stories, to advocate for equity, and to inspire all of us to see the value in every voice. Congratulations, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilmember, and the rest of the city council. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. What an honor. I'm here joined by my wife, Monica, and my daughter, Isella. My two other children could not be here. They are there when I have to leave and to cover either a hurricane or an earthquake, not knowing when I'll come home or not knowing if I'll come home, so I appreciate their support. I really didn't have an excuse not to make it in journalism because I was taught by the very best. Rigo Chacon was my mentor, took me under his wings, and then when I got to KN TV 29 years ago, they sat this cub reporter next to Doug and Maggie, and so I learned about integrity and honesty right from the get-go. And so I appreciate what they were able to do for me. People sometimes ask, "What is the most memorable story?" One of them that always comes out is a story about Rosalinda Rivas. She was a custodian at the old City Hall, and then she became a custodian here. And she, I did a story on her because she was sort of the ambassador to the city of San Jose, because every time you walked into City Hall, didn't matter who you were, there she was with a smile on her face, welcoming you into the house of San Joseans. So I did a story on her, and unfortunately, we lost her a few years after they opened this City Hall, and I found out later that inside her locker at this City Hall was a framed picture, autographed picture that I had given her. And so she's very dear to my heart, and that's one of my favorite stories. As we all know, the First Amendment is under attack right now. If you will allow me, if the viewers will allow me, I will continue to represent this community and bring the news with honesty and integrity. I thank you all so much.
I would be remiss to thank Councilmember Candelaus for being here. I know he is a personal family friend of Damian. Wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and I think we're keeping Councilmembers Candelaus and Ortiz here, and they have invited the entire council to come join us here at the podium as we recognize and proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. So we'll welcome everybody down.
Awesome. Well, yeah, my San Jose State folks, while you come down, I just wanted to thank everybody, welcome everybody. Today, we're going to be recognizing September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in our city of San Jose. This is a time for us to reflect on the invaluable contributions of the Hispanic and Latino communities across the nation. San Jose has been home to a rich history of cultures, and the Hispanic-Latino communities play a central role in shaping the identity of our city. From our local businesses to our schools, our community members are an integral part of what makes San Jose so special. Throughout our city's history, our Hispanic and Latino residents have played a leading role in shaping our economy, culture, and education, and continues making significant contributions to this day. At the heart of the thriving community are those who lead, inspire, and uplift others. Leaders like Blanca Alvarado, Rose Amador, Ron Gonzalez, Pete Corillo, and Victor Garza all paved the way for generational change and served as a guiding force for many, including myself. As a first-generation Mexican-American, I am proud to celebrate this month, and especially to a commitment to amplifying those voices, amplifying those voices where we can and create spaces where diversity is celebrated and embraced. Nuestra comunidad siempre estará unida, sigamos adelante juntos, con orgullo y esperanza. Our community will always be united. Let's move together, unified with pride and hope. At this time, I am also honored to introduce Celine Ramirez from the San Jose State University Chicane X Latin X Student Success Center, who will share more about the significance of Hispanic heritage a month before the mayor presents the proclamation. We also are joined by Maria Fuentes Martin, VP of Student Affairs, and Magdalena Barrera, Vice Provost of Faculty Success. That being said, go Spartans! And Celine, the microphone is yours.
Good afternoon. My name is Celine Ramirez, and it is my honor to receive this proclamation on behalf of the Chicane X Latin X Student Success Center, also known as Centro at San Jose State University. As we come together in recognition of Latinx Heritage Month, observed from September 15 to October 15, we embrace the opportunity to honor, learn from, and celebrate the rich histories and vibrant cultures of our Latinx students and communities. Centro is more than a physical space. It is a home away from home. It is a dedicated community learning space where students can study, build meaningful connections, engage in dialogue, and receive personal and academic support. While it centers the experiences of our Chicane X and Latinx students, all SJSU students are welcome to join and find belonging. On behalf of Centro, I want to thank our students and colleagues for helping us create such a beautiful space, one that ensures every student feels seen, valued, and supported. Together, we continue to celebrate and uplift the voices, cultures, and contributions of the Latinx community at SJSU and beyond. Thank you, Councilmember Peter Ortiz and Domingo Candelaus. Thank you, everyone.
Now, Mayor, will you present the commendation and on behalf of all of our colleagues on the city council who are up here? Thank you so much.
All right. Vice Mayor, on behalf of the whole council, excited to proclaim Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you all very much. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I'm not aware of any, so we will move on to the closed session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session.
Okay. Thank you, Nora. Next is the consent calendar. I'll ask colleagues for items they'd like to pull. I am aware, thank you to colleagues for the advance notes. Vice Mayor Foley would like to pull item 2.5. That's the city council travel report, and she'll offer a brief presentation on her recent trip. And then Councilwoman Dwan would like to pull item 2.12 for comment. Maybe at that point, unless there are any other items, at that point, we could take a motion on consent as a whole, unless anything else comes up. But I'll turn to the Vice Mayor first for her travel report.
Great. Thank you so much. I spent the last 10 days in Japan, both in Okayama, Japan, which is our sister city, and then in Izumizano City, which is in the Osaka prefecture. I went as a representative, as a director, with the Sister Cities International Program. We held an international summit with over 50 countries represented and over 500 people in attendance. The first part of my trip took me and my husband, and I should add this, that this was not a taxpayer trip. This was a personally funded trip. Took my husband and I to Okayama to say greetings to the Okayama delegation who had visited us earlier in April. I went as a representative of the mayor. The mayor, Omori, greeted us very generously and spent time with us, along with the city council in Okayama. I got to learn a lot about how they run their city council business. You'd be interested to know, Mayor, that they have a strong mayor system, that the mayor actually appoints all of the staff and moves them around from department to department. He has no involvement in the committee meetings, and in the council meetings, that is run by the chairman. Very interesting.
Sounds good to me.
But they have 45 council members, and, but they are part-time positions, and they're all wonderfully and wonderful and gracious. This was my fourth trip to Japan, my first trip as an official delegate, so it was really a special opportunity to meet with Okayama. I have a couple of videos that I want to show you, but first, I want to say that our relationship with Okayama is a very long one. We had started in 1957. The Sister City program was started by President Eisenhower in 1956. Next year, we celebrate our 70th anniversary, and in 2017, San Jose and Okayama celebrate their 70th. And they are looking forward to seeing a delegation from San Jose, including the mayor. They would love you to attend, Mayor Mahan, in 2017, when they have their, 2027, I should say, I'm jumping backwards. 2027 have their 70th anniversary. They have a lot of activities planned for the delegation, and I'm sure they will be here in kind. They are a very generous, a very kind, a very respectful community. It was just so much delight to be with the Japanese culture, and anyone who has an opportunity to visit Okayama, please let us know, and we'll introduce you to the department they have that handles the, they have a whole department handling international affairs. Can you imagine that? A whole department. And they're just incredibly gracious. So the other thing I want to mention is that I do have two videos. The mayor, Omori, who is as busy as our mayor, was very gracious to offer us 30 minutes of time. He spoke to us in English. English is obviously not his first language, but he did beautifully with it. And then he spoke to us in Japanese as well. We had translators along the way. They thought of everything. Timing was exquisite. It just was the most wonderful, respectful, rewarding event. I was able to present a letter on the behalf of the mayor and a gift also on behalf of the mayor, and I think I have two videos to present before I present a gift to the mayor. You should know that in Japanese culture, gift-giving is truly an art form. It's very important that you give the gift, you acknowledge the gift, and a gift is given in return. So we made sure, we had a lot of gift-giving going on. I do want to thank the staff in Okayama, and I want to thank the staff here in City Hall. City manager, Jen Baker, Blague, who all helped with the gifts that I was able to bring over to Japan and present to the Japanese Okayama people. So with that, let's see, I think I have two videos, one of the presentation to the mayor, and then one is a marketing piece that the department in Okayama put together. .............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
A triennial international art exhibition showcases Okayama's cultural scene. The city was the first in Japan to be recognized as UNESCO City of Literature, and is a key host for international conferences, fostering global exchange. Okayama City has also focused on the preservation and development of its heritage, such as Okayama Castle, once home to samurai ninja, and Okayama Korakuin Garden, one of Japan's top three gardens. The number of nationally designated historic sites is second only to Kyoto among Japan's large cities. Okayama unites history, culture, and people, creating a vibrant hub for sports and events. Sports teams fill the city with energy and excitement. The Okayama Marathon attracts runners from across the globe, the Naked Man Festival, Saideji Eo, and the Dynamic Festival, Uraja, with nearly 350,000 people. Energy fuels new connections, while diversity drives growth. Okayama continues to move forward, shaping the future. The vibrant crossroads, Okayama City.
That video makes me smile because it reminds me how energetic and friendly and generous the people are of Okayama. Do we have the next one? The next one is a presentation to Mayor Omori of a gift kindly donated to us by the Sharks. He was thrilled to receive this Sharks jersey, and I should note that '57 is the year that San Jose Okayama started its Sister City program, so that's the significance of the number. The box that it came in from the Sharks was a box with a video playout. When you opened the box, you could see the Sharks perform in front of us. It was vibrant, exciting, and lively. Not captured in the video, but the mayor and his team were just so thrilled by that gift and by the generosity of San Jose when they were here in April, and they hope to reciprocate when we're there in a couple of years. And I hope to tag along, even though I won't be a city council member. And on that note, the mayor sent a gift for me to present to our mayor. So Mayor Mahan, on behalf of Mayor Omori, I present with you a gift of ceramics, which is famous in Okayama.
Thank you. This is beautiful. All right, I'll drink my coffee.
Can we get a picture so we can send it to Okayama so they saw that I did my official duty?
Yeah, there we go.
Very important. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Thanks for the travel report and this beautiful.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. What a beautiful gift, and I do hope we can return the favor in a couple of years. You mentioned how long-running this Sister City relationship is, 1957. A lot has changed since then, but you think about the state of the world at that time and how it still is important today that we build these kinds of international relationships and promote common values and understanding across cultures. So I appreciate how committed you've been to the Sister City relationship, and I'm glad you were able to take the time to go, take the trip and promote this cultural exchange. So thank you for the travel report and the beautiful gift, and I'll be sure to write a handwritten thank you note back to the mayor. So thank you for that. I think we're going to move to the second item that was polled. Councilwoman Dewan polled item 2.12, so I'll turn to him now.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, my colleagues, Mayor Matt Mahan, Councilmember Compost, Ann Kamay, and I, present a resolution of support for Assembly Concurrent Resolution 71. Assembly Concurrent Resolution 71 proposed naming a portion of Highway 101 near Story Road, the Little Saigon Freeway. This is more than a name. It's a tribute to the resilient contribution and cultural heritage of one of the largest Vietnamese-American community in the nation. Little Saigon is a vital part of San Jose identity and economy. This designation alongside effort like the Vietnamese Heritage Garden and Thank You American Monument honor their history and pursuit of American dreams. I urge my colleague to support ACR 71 as it moved through the Senate Transportation Committee in January, ensuring future generation remember and celebrate these contributions. I also like to take an opportunity to thank State Assemblyman Ash Karra for bringing this ACR 71 to support our Vietnamese community. Again, thank you so much, and I look to have your support.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate that. Would you like to move that item along with the rest of the consent calendar?
Moved for approval of the consent calendar.
Great. Thank you. Now we'll turn to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to express, I also wanted to express my gratitude to Assemblymember Karra for creating this resolution to name this segment of highway near the Story Road exit Little Saigon Freeway. Also, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their memo as well. While this portion of the highway does not run through my district, I feel very strongly about supporting this item. District 5 is home to one of the largest Vietnamese communities in San Jose, and I'm deeply proud to represent them. Our Vietnamese residents in San Jose endured incredible hardships and demonstrated unparalleled resiliency in their efforts in building their homes and lives here in San Jose. This action is more than just naming a highway. It is a powerful recognition of the perseverance, contributions, and lasting impact of our Vietnamese residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate both your comments, also very supportive, and think this is a great way to recognize the Vietnamese community here. So we have a motion on the consent calendar as a whole from Councilwoman Dewan. Anyone wishing to comment on any item on consent, including item 2.12, will be able to do so, but I'll turn it over to Tony.
Yes, I have four cards. Hong Kao, Tin Kao, Thien Wing, and Brian Darby, please all come forward.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, my name is Hong Kao. I'm a retired city employee, and also here I am president of District 8 for 45 years, for the last 4 years. I'm so proud to be the citizen of San Jose because I saw, you know, the San Jose grow from the very small city until right now one of the best place to live, and I appreciate for all your support. And today, I come here to support for the ACR 71 because I see the committee of Vietnamese committee and with the other committee try very hard to build, you know, the very successful business along the Story Road, and also they contribute a lot for the culture and, you know, for this country. And with the support, your support, you know, the North California, San Jose will join with the South California to help a section of the freeway 101 to name Little Saigon. This will be the landmark, not only for San Jose, but for all over the world, all the committee, Vietnamese committee over the world, because San Jose is one of the largest population of Vietnamese, population outside of Vietnam. I appreciate for your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mahan and the councilmembers. I would like to address my gratitude to Councilmember Kamay and Campbell, along with District 7 Councilmember Bienduan for adopt a resolution of support for ACR 71 authored by Assemblymember Ash Karra to designate a dress of 101 in Santa Clara County to be named Little Saigon. This name is, have a lot of meaning to us. It's a powerful symbol of our identity, cultural heritage, and our contribution to California in particular and to the USA in general. So I would like to urge all the council to vote in favor of this proposal. In order to do that, you show your understanding and solidarity with our Vietnamese community members. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, my name is Thien Wing, General Mayor Matt Mahan, Councilmember, and Vice Mayor Pam Foley, you know. I live in Tokyo for 14 years. That's why, you know, when you show your picture, it's so impressive for me. Thank you so much. And the Japanese people say, "Natsu kasi." Natsu kasi. Okay, very simple. I am totally agree with Councilmember Bienduan, Councilmember Autisit, about ACR 71 of Assemblyman Ash Karra, who want to name a portion of West Highway 101 near Story Road to Little Saigon Freeway. Little Saigon Freeway, yes. I certainly support the Little Saigon Freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I just wanted to bring up on the consent calendar, the Disability Awareness Day that's coming on October 30th, which is a Tuesday, I'm sorry, a Thursday. And I would like, I'm not sure if it's included in the agenda for them, but how AI supports people with disabilities, environmental controls, communication systems, being able to write advocacy letters for yourself and express yourself in a more systematic way, and artificial intelligence helps that happen. I've worked with people with disabilities for almost 45, 48 years now, and would like to say that it's sure a long way from boards that you point at, the communication system. One lady who's passed on, but I worked with, she had four different languages on this wooden board, and that's what she used to communicate. We tried getting all the high-tech stuff, but nope, she liked that board. And as we go into newer generations, hopefully, we'll continue to provide these services to people with disabilities because it doesn't look like that's going to continue. I don't know how much you can advocate for the federal cuts that are happening, but it will get worse, and some programs are cutting as much as 90%, and I don't know how programs survive without cut. Thank you.
Back to council.
All right. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up, so I think we're ready to vote on consent.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're on to land use consent. This is item 10.1A. Turn to colleagues, see if we have a motion.
Move for second.
Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Coming back to the council, I don't see any hands. Let's vote.
Can you vote verbally? Oh, I'm just having a glitch. Apparently it went through. My screen wasn't showing it went through, but I guess it did. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tony. Let's move on to item 3.1, report of the city manager.
No report.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Lee Wilcox. Let's go on to item 3.3, Status of Open Audit Recommendations, and we will have a staff presentation. I see our city auditor, Joe Royce, coming down, and we'll let him get settled in.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Joe Royce, city auditor. I'm here with Michelle Malari from our office to present our report on the status of open audit recommendations as of June 30th, 2025. The city auditor's primary responsibility under the city charter is conducting performance audits. They include recommendations to correct efficiencies, strengthen accountability, and improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and equity of city programs. Over the past 10 years, our office has issued nearly 100 audit reports with 650 audit recommendations covering many aspects of city operations. We monitor progress toward implementing recommendations for past performance audits and provide regular reports on the status of those recommendations. This report shows progress on 151 audit recommendations. It does not include audits brought to you in recent months, such as the audits of cost of special events, access and use of traffic safety programs by traditionally marginalized communities or procurement. Those will be included in our next status update. Since our last report, 42 audit recommendations were implemented or closed, and we'll be carrying over 109 open audit recommendations to the next cycle. I want to point out, this is the fewest recommendations we'll be carrying forward across cycles that we've seen in more than a decade, so a lot of work's been done by the administration over the years. As noted earlier, we've made about 650 recommendations over the past 10 years, and of those, 85% have been implemented or closed, which is above our target of 80%. To get a sense of the breadth of departments of work to implement recommendations from past audits, we want to highlight a handful. The Finance Department worked with the city's outside financial auditors and the city's development partners to determine the proper accounting treatment of development fee revenues, and also updated the city's encumbrance policy and created additional guidance for staff to better manage encumbrances moving forward. The Police Department finalized a community engagement plan and established a team within the Crime Prevention Unit to coordinate its community engagement activities. The department also updated its duty manual to clarify responsibilities around gun violence restraining orders. Department of Transportation developed new performance measures to assess progress on tree planting goals, including resident ratings of street trees and other metrics. And the city manager's Office of Communications Language Access Manager began site visits of city facilities and also developed standard operating procedures for monitoring language accessibility and created new trainings and made other resources available for city staff to support the city's language access and equity efforts. A few more I want to highlight. Public Works Animal Care and Services Division implemented multiple recommendations from our 2024 audit of the animal care and services, including formalizing protocols for different aspects of operations, such as pathway planning for incoming animals, better tracking foster animals, communications, and licensing. Parks Recreation Averaged Services, or PRNS, created a tool to compare beautify SJP light reduction beautification service delivery to the Healthy Places Index to support equitable service delivery moving forward. And lastly, in the area of open government, the administration clarified guidelines around disclosures of public subsidies and updated city policies around the retention and disposition of electronic records. The list that I've just run through gives you both a sense of the variety and breadth of our work over the years, as well as the continued progress departments are making to improve the city's system of internal controls over important programs and services. In 2018, the city council directed the city manager to identify and prioritize work on 12 outstanding audit recommendations. I'm going to quickly run through the current 12 priority recommendations. The three in the area of potential budgetary savings or revenue generation include improving overtime controls in the police department. Since our audit of police staffing expenditures and workload in 2021, the department implemented new controls over discretionary overtime, has required captains to submit quarterly overtime reports, created a dashboard for supervisors to review overtime details, and more recently, required the chief's approval for certain types of overtime. Despite overtime continuing to rise, these actions met the intent of the recommendation, thus we're considering it implemented. Adding community service officers to address lower priority police calls. Since that same audit that I just mentioned, the police department reduced supervisory positions, or CSO supervisory positions, to deploy all CSOs out in the field. They also began a pilot to align CSO and patrol schedules. Again, these actions met the intent to deploy additional CSOs out in the field, and we consider this one implemented. Next one was outreach on the massage ordinance and notifying massage businesses when their permits are about to expire. Code enforcement reviewed business tax data and massage therapy council more recently, required the chief's approval for certain types of overtime. Despite overtime continuing to rise, these actions met the intent of the recommendation, thus we're considering it implemented. Adding community service officers to address lower priority police calls. Since that same audit that I just mentioned, the police department reduced supervisory positions, or CSO supervisory positions, to deploy all CSOs out in the field. They also began a pilot to align CSO and patrol schedules. Again, these actions met the intent to deploy additional CSOs out in the field, and we consider this one implemented. Next one was outreach on the massage ordinance and notifying massage businesses when their permits are about to expire. Code enforcement reviewed business tax data and massage therapy council records to create a roster of potential businesses. Code and the police department have implemented an outreach strategy, and through the police department's new permitting software, there are improvements to the permitting and renewal processes. So this one as well is considered implemented. The three recommendations in the area of operational efficiency include identifying vacant lands within the city's real estate portfolio and reporting on their intended use, finalizing and publishing guidelines about the city's SEQA requirements and process for environmental consultants, and contracting with outside service providers for spay and neuter services. Progress continues to be made on each of those three to varying degrees. In the area of citywide security or risk mitigation, developing citywide administrative guidelines for procedures for managing federal grants. Finance Department finalized a city grants acquisition management compliance policy in May of 2025, covering various aspects of managing federal dollars. It's currently available on Finance's Intranet site. Updating the emergency operations plan to ensure segregation of duties and formalizing procurement tools. The Office of Emergency Management updated the EOP or Emergency Operations Plan to reassign staff to segregate incompatible duties. And Finance has finalized a cost recovery document for future emergency operations. Lastly, improving the accuracy and usefulness of reporting tools for encumbrances. Finance and the Information Technology Department have worked to fix errors and close out a significant number of zero balance encumbrances, significantly streamlining the reporting process. Each of those three are considered implemented. The three priorities in the area of improved service delivery include increased language translations of vital documents and include language translation options in sjpermits.org website, updating the San Jose Animal Care Centers or Care and Services Manual to align with Association of Shelter Veterinarian Guidelines, and incorporating all languages spoken by 5% or more of the population into the SJ311 website and mobile application. Those three recommendations are also in varying stages of implementation. More information about all open audit recommendations is available in the appendices of our report and online in our interactive dashboards, which you can find on, which are shown in the slide, as well as you can find them on our website. With that, I'd like to thank all the city departments for their efforts to implement audit recommendations and for their assistance in compiling the report. I'd also like to thank all of my staff for working with the various departments to document and verify information in the report, and particularly the status of all the open audit recommendations. Happy to answer any questions, and then I ask you to accept the report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Tony, do we have a public comment?
Brian, come on down.
One of the emails I write, believe that I go to the website for the president, and I put my information in there. I'm absolutely convinced he doesn't read it. But you do the best you can to exercise your rights. I was concerned about Dodge and still am, even though that circus has bowed down a little bit. And I suggested if he hired a bunch of auditors and actuarials and accountants who were aggressive, he could cut off a lot more without damaging any programs. And of course, that doesn't, it's not very showy, being an auditor isn't really, if nobody wants to hear from you, at least, at least a city here, people do want to hear from the auditor, that's not, that's pretty rare. I've been to a lot of meetings and auditors are not liked because they tell the truth. And I think that should be something that we should celebrate. And sometimes doing the right thing, it, it's not welcomed, it's not celebrated, but it's definitely necessary. And I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Back to council.
Great. Thank you, Tony. You're our public speaker. Coming back to the council, we'll start with Councilmember Duong.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for the report. I just have a couple of question. On page number six, is identify all vacant lands within the city real estate portfolio and report on that land and their intended use annually. The target date is February of 2026. Will there be an update on the Singleton property at this time?
So I don't know about the specific property. So at the time of the audit, when we did the real estate audit, they did not have a good database of all the city's lands, and they implemented a database software which able to track it, and this report out is aligned, it was a report out to CED. And Kevin's coming down to talk about Singleton property.
Good afternoon, council. Kevin Ice, Director of Real Estate. So that date is when the annual real estate services update will go to the CED committee. And yes, it will include an update on Singleton.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you for coming down. I have my last question will go towards our director, Matt Lesch.
Councilmember, do you want to start asking your question?
Sure, as he coming down.
Comes down, yeah.
With a target date around the corner for spay and neuter outside of our network, is the ACS on track for the December goal?
Yes, Matt Lesch, Director of Public Works. We are on target to hit all 39 of the recommendations in our audit for 2024. So we will be hitting, we're on target for all 39 of the recommendations, including that one.
Well, that, exciting to hear that you hit all 39 recommendation. That's incredible. And maybe just a quick question, are we in the process of hiring a new manager for the ACS?
Yes, the recruitment is ongoing for the deputy director position that is over ACS, yes.
And do you know when we'll be able to possibly finalize that?
Hopefully shortly.
Shortly as two months?
Yes, within, so again, I can't predict the future on these things. The recruitment is ongoing. We hope in the next month or so, we have an announcement of the position being filled.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, councilmember. Let me turn now to councilmember Command.
I'd like to thank the auditor and the team for always doing a great job here. I want to say I particularly like both Appendix A and B. I could always go to it at a glance, and if I want to go to the detail, I go to B. But I want to highlight your interactive dashboard of recommendations. I really, really like that. I, you know, make it available and let people know about it in case they're interested. So I just want to say thank you for your good work. I know that we never want to see any red in there, but it's, it's at least progress towards completion, getting it going. And, you know, I'd like to thank the departments because there's a lot of work that's involved in getting these done. And so I just want to go ahead and accept the report.
Second. Great. Thank you, councilmember. Let me turn now to Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I too just want to thank you, Joe, and your department for always coming forward with a really honest, thoughtful report. I like to see the open audit report because it shows all the successes that we've had over the years and the areas that we still are working on. And I know there's some like overtime and things that are continuing to be looked at, but I like this sort of semi-annual check-in to see where we are. I already asked you my question yesterday, I guess it was, of what keeps you awake at night? So I'm going to ask you publicly, what keeps you awake at night as it relates to this?
So that is a really good question. The, I would, I would say that no specific recommendations, it's generally just kind of the scope of the work and overall risk to the city's overall internal control structure or system in the context of multi-year budget deficits. Internal controls at their most basic level are just the systems we put in place to make sure things are working as intended. You know, these are, and the most, you know, standard operating procedures, what sort of systems do we have in place for, to attract talented individuals to come work with us? How do we train them up? How do we supervise them? What sort of quality control systems do we have in place? What sort of data systems do we have in place to track and monitor and report out on service delivery? And I know departments take internal control seriously. That's why we saw so many things implemented, you know, the, if I just think, think back what I described earlier, the, you know, updating the duty manual to clarify responsibilities around gun violence restraining orders, that's enhancement of the internal control system. Updating the encumbrance policy, developing performance measures around tree plantings, you know, those are all aspects of the internal control structure that's, that have been improved. But when there are stress, when there's multiple, multi-year budget deficits, I get concerned that internal controls become nice to haves, become deprioritized. And what does that mean down the road in terms of, are we going to be able to meet our, our, our goals? Are we going to be able to protect assets the way we like to? So at a high level, that's what, what I'm concerned about right now. I wouldn't point to the administration or any departments that they don't take it seriously, but I also know when there's lots of, when there are budget deficits, trade-offs have to be made. And so I just ask that you all keep that in mind as you're, as we move into budget season in the fall and then in the spring about what those, what those trade-offs mean from a internal control standpoint.
I appreciate that, and I think we at council often see opportunities for additional, to add additional work, but that results in additional time and takes away some of the efficiencies that already occur in various departments. So we need to be very aware when, when we're adding things to PBCE, for instance, that we are aware of the manpower that they have who can actually handle the work, and then are certain processes going away because they, of the expeditious nature of the activity, whatever it is. So I think we just need to go eyes wide open, and, and I appreciate your, your honest response to that. I also want to give a shout out to you, Joe. He presented, we had a, I had a joint meeting with Councilmember Casey where Joe presented his information about what the auditor does, and we had, it was a well-attended audience and a lot of good questions, and he's coming again to my District Nine Leadership Group in a couple of weeks. So if you're looking for speakers for any town halls or any events, fellow councilmembers, consider our auditor. He has a lot of good information, and people like to hear what he has to say. They really trust that he's, he's an independent auditor, and they trust what he has to say. So thank you very much for your report.
Thanks for that, Vice Mayor. I just want to add the thanks, Joe, to you and your team for the report, but also to our city departments for diligently implementing many recommendations. I just wanted to flag that we're down to, from 145 to 109 recommendations, as I think Joe mentioned, 85 of which are partially completed. So I understand that this is the fewest open recommendations in over a decade, and that is, I think, a tribute to the value of focus. We're trying to do fewer things, focus on the most important and foundational matters that really affect quality of life, safety, our basic responsibilities for all of our residents. And I think staff has done a really nice job of following through on the open recommendations in those focus areas. And I think our auditor has been even more focused on those highest priority areas that the council's given guidance on. So I think there's real value in that. One of our areas of focus is building more housing, and I do just want to flag, and maybe, do we have Chris here?
Chiu.
We have Chiu. All right, Chiu, let me pick on you for a second. Chris isn't here. Just kidding. There's a lot of change around SEQA. So I guess I wanted to flag of the priority areas, priority recommendations, one of the few that is still red relates to SEQA. I think in total, we have eight recommendations for SEQA process improvements. And then we have some, I think, positive change out of Sacramento with some additional stream, streamlining related to infill development. So can you just give us an update, if, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but just a little bit on the state of play around SEQA and what it means for these open recommendations? I'll also note, in our budget message in both March and June, we spoke pretty extensively about the need to continue to simplify and streamline the application of SEQA, particularly when it comes to housing. So if you don't mind just giving us a little bit of an update.
Yes, mayor. To best of my knowledge, yes, the SEQA stage has passed the new law examining certain project. So step, one part is trying to sort out what is exam, what is not exam. And same time, we had a couple of meetings, we saw the developer roundtable just like last month, when we listened to their feedback. But one is we know what we do, and one we want to explain to the developer in their community what the SEQA today means differently, what requirement maybe still require in our planning process even with or without the SEQA. So we are still in the process of sorting that out, and same time, working with the developer, the community to listen to their feedback. Some part of their feedback to us is since the SEQA is examined certain area, why you are still required in the planning process. So we are working with them, like you said, is streamline the process as much as we can. To one way is meet the state requirement, same time explaining that to the community, whoever developer proposed a project. You might see a lot of, every memo we present to the council at the end is always the SEQA that element, right? So we always want to explain that to the developer to let her know, no, you don't need to go through the SEQA now, or why you still need to go through the SEQA process. So that's what we are working on right now. Certainly, the goal is make it as faster and as simple as possible. Yes.
Yeah, that sounds like a good goal to me. And are you saying that we, even though it's state law and the governor signed it, we're still not clear on where it applies? What's the, can you help us understand how quickly we can get that clarity?
The state law on the SEQA, we believe is clear what we should follow. I think the not clear for some area to the developer is even without the SEQA, certain process, either that's a traffic or different thing, we still will require based on our own zoning code requirement. So that's one we need to clarify with developer. Yes, we understand the SEQA, that process no longer needed, but in the city process, there's still certain requirement we have to go through to see the impact. So hopefully, we can align with the state requirement, or we come up with good reason why in our approval process still require analyzing certain element regardless of the SEQA exam or not exam.
Yeah, well, I'm sure we'll all be interested to learn more about that. I mean, my personal inclination would be to try to align with the state's efforts to streamline and that we should really lean that direction. But of course, I could understand staff sharing with the council areas where you all feel it's really important for us to continue to study certain impacts. What would be the rough timeline for us to get clarity, given this big change in state law?
Actually, just this Thursday, we'll have another roundtable meeting with developer. We'll have a presentation. Again, we will utilize every chance we have to clarify with the developer. Internally, we do have our goal, like mayor you mentioned, regardless SEQA required or not, even we require, we want the thing go faster. Otherwise, make no sense. If SEQA requires certain process, we still require, but we don't, we're not able to go faster, it doesn't make any sense. So we understand that piece. So we want to work on this, even we still require certain element to analyzing it, how we can make it go faster. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I guess my last two questions on this, and I'll pause after this topic, I can take some of my other questions offline. One is you're mentioning the developer roundtable. It also seems to me from experience that having the buy-in of the city attorney and her team is helpful here, so in order to put you on the spot. It's often the lawyers who, you know, mess everything up and make it go slower. Just kidding. So are you also coordinating and making sure we have real clarity between the PBCE team and our city attorney's office on what our minimum requirements are given this new state law?
Definitely. Yeah, we work with attorney office pretty close on that.
And mayor, I think part of the information that's needed often is to provide the legal basis for fees. So we can't just pull fees out of thin air, and sometimes there's information needed for, for the fees that accompany development.
Okay. And then final question is just, at what point would the council get an update on the progress to streamline SEQA and particularly implement or align with this new state law? Is that something that would go to CED or, sorry?
Yeah, that will be one form. Or we can do an info memo to the council to go, go through the process. Yes.
Okay. I guess I'd just suggest, and I'll, I'll kind of leave this open to staff, to, to city manager and staff to decide, but given the amount of direction in recent budget messages, and now the state law that we need to comply with and the open recs, I think at some point, whether it's through CED or an info memo or whatever you all see is most appropriate and what the right timing is, I think it would be good to know where we are in our efforts to, we talk about streamline SEQA, we've been saying. efforts to, we talk about streamline CEQA, we've been saying that for years. I'd like to know specifically what are the changes we're making and what are the changes we're choosing not to make and are there discretionary policy decisions there that the council may want to weigh in on?
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, great. And I'm seeing persistency manager nod as well. Thank you, Chiu. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I don't see any other hands up, so why don't we move to a vote?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you all very much. Have a great afternoon. We're on to item 6.1, Stormwater Management Annual Report 2024-2025. We also have a staff presentation, so we'll give folks a moment to transition.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Provenzano, Director of the Environmental Services Department. And today's item is an update on our annual stormwater permit. This is a permit we require to bring back to council every year before we submit it to, to the water board. And this is backward-looking. This is for the last fiscal year. We'll go through some numbers here in the report. There are more recent numbers, but, but as we go forward, any questions that you have, we'll be more than happy to address them as we're doing the presentation. With me today is Rajini Nair, Deputy Director for the Environmental Services Department, Jennifer Seguin, Deputy Director for Transportation, Olympia Williams, Deputy Director for Parks, Recreation, Neighborhood Services, and of course Deputy Director Matthew Nguyen with the Department of Public Works. And with that, I'll kick it over to Rajini.
Thanks, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council and public. My name is Rajini Nair, Deputy Director of Environmental Services. I'm here with my colleagues to provide the update on the stormwater permit. Next slide. All right. Okay. Oops. So just a quick overview of today's presentation. As Jeff mentioned, this is looking back at fiscal year 2425, and we'll be just focused on our accomplishments and what are some of the next steps that we'll be doing for this fiscal year. Just a quick reminder, the stormwater permit adheres to the Federal Clean Water Act that essentially states the prohibition of any pollutant discharge into the waters of the United States. Also, as you may recall, this stormwater permit became effective as of July 1st, 2022, and covers 22 provisions that involves almost half of the city departments as listed above. We're now in year three of this five-year stormwater permit, which will expire in June of 2027. So for today's presentation, we're just going to focus on what's highlighted in the key provisions that are identified in the red rectangular box. So I'll start off with Jennifer.
Thank you, Rajini. Jennifer Sagan, Deputy Director, Department of Transportation. I'm going to cover the C3 provision, which is green stormwater infrastructure for new and redevelopment. And the goal there is to, to ensure that new development treats their stormwater on-site before it runs off into the storm drain system. And we have a really exciting accomplishment in FYE 2024-25, and that's the completion of the River View Stormwater Garden Regional Stormwater Capture Project. Some of you were there for the ribbon cutting, I remember. It's a very large regional project, which is unusual and was given the Outstanding Stormwater Capture and Use Implementation Project by the California Stormwater Quality During the year, the city approved permits for 45 GSI projects. Forty-one of them were public and four, private and four were public. The team inspected 24% of the total inventory of 655 projects, which is exceeding the 20% minimum per year that we need to inspect. Future regional GSI projects and anticipated design will begin in early this year, has already begun, with construction completed for one project in the fall of 2027. And I will pass it to Olympia. Matthew.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm Matthew Nguyen, Public Works Deputy Director, oversee the CIP program in the city. I'll talk about a provision C10, provision C10 focused on the trash load reduction. Essentially, it means we have to capture and take care of all of the trash before it's reaching the surrounding water body. And out of all of the provisions that Rajini mentioned, this is one of the most stringent provision because we have a timeline to meet, which is by the end of this year, we have to capture 100% of the trash load coming to the surrounding water. So this program requires a lot of other programs to support. The first program that we implement is the full trash capture device. And so far, we install a total of 36 large trash capture in the city. And in the last fiscal year, we also installed about 462 small trash capture device in last fiscal year alone. So you can see this device on the right-hand side of the slide. Another program that we use is the private land drainage program. And so a total of about 2,400 parcel has been assessed. And fortunately, only 234 of those need to comply. And ESD is working with those properties to make sure that they'll be in compliance. Another program that we are implementing is the On Land Visual Trash Assessment Program, also known as OVTA, which focuses on the citywide programs such as public trash, litter cans, neighborhood leader, street sweeping, et cetera, so that we can address the trash in the curb and gutter and roadways before it reaches the water body. These programs are critical to help the city to meet and maintain the 100% compliance. A new program will also be added to the OVTA program. It's called Adopt a Storm Drain, which was inspired by District One and now has been expanded to citywide. So under this program, we'll engage the community in bringing more awareness about protecting our storm system and preventing trash from entering into the surrounding water body. So in the next few day, a few months, sorry, we'll continue to install small trash capture in the city. We'll also bring back and bid the two locations where we are supposed to have some trash capture device. And then we'll continue to enforce the 234 private parcels that's connected to the stormwater system. And so in summary, the city currently is at 97.7% compliance without any offset. And our goal is to achieve the 100% compliance by the end of this year. With that, I'll pass to Olympia.
Thank you, Matthew. I'm Olympia Williams, Deputy Director of the Community Services Division in PRNS. As you may recall, the water board approved the city's direct discharge plan in June of 2024. Provision C17 focuses on direct discharges from encampments near waterways and lived-in vehicles. In 2425, Beautify SJ abated encampments from 16 miles of waterways and created no encampment zones. This included the removal of over 3.6 million pounds of trash and debris. As of today, we have cleared encampments from 27.2 miles of waterways in the direct discharge zone areas and established over 22 miles of no encampment zones. In 2425, the Department of Transportation cleared 30 Olive sites. Beautify SJ provided over 2,600 bio-waste removal services as part of our RVP3 program or our recreational vehicle pollution prevention program. I would also like to note that our housing department completed both Phase One and Phase Two of our waterway surge count. Moving forward, Beautify SJ will complete encampment abatements in the direct discharge areas along the waterways, and our partners in DOT will continue to implement the Olive program at up to 50 sites during this fiscal year. I will now pass it back to Rajini.
Thanks, Olympia. So the remaining provisions that are listed here are small but mighty. So we'll start off with the very first one on Provision 11 and 12. This is focused on the polychlorinated bifonels that are known as PCBs and mercury. Essentially, this is very focused in old industrial areas throughout the Bay Area. And so San Jose, I mean, as part, within Santa Clara County, there is a good number of parcels that do have these PCBs. And so we've identified some that are considered high or potentially elevated levels. And so with that, we'll have to work closely either with the water board or the city. We'll have to work with those property owners to address the PCBs present. There is an ultimate goal that we have to achieve in this permit term. So it's about 121 grams that we have to do or remove from our, you know, water bodies. The next one is C15, which is focused on emergency firefighting discharges. The, the goal for this particular annual report was to submit a regional firefighting report, and this was collaborated among throughout Bay Area agencies. There's a total of 79 permities that are involved with this particular stormwater permit for the San Francisco region. The next steps is really to now next train personnel and then potentially look at least environmentally, environmental foams that could be utilized and also evaluate large industrial sites. The next provision, which I want to really draw your attention to, it's the very first time where we're actually providing a cost report of, of implementing the stormwater permit. And so for fiscal year 2425, we've implemented, we've allocated or budgeted 124 million last fiscal year. And so we just wanted to highlight the three provisions that have been kind of the lion's share of, of that total budget. And so 14.6 was allocated to C3, which Jennifer talked about, which was focused on green infrastructure. And C10 and C17 combined is about 92 million, which is what Olympia and, and Matthew have been talking about, all associated with trash. And so really hats off to all of you for allocating that funding. So truly appreciate it. So C21, that's the other provision, that's a new provision where we do need to focus on the lifecycle costs of a lot of our water quality assets. So what Matthew and Jennifer talked about, with full trash capture and green infrastructure, that's what we are required to do. And then moving forward, starting July 1st of this year, we have to implement this plan. So before we close, I do have a presentation highlighting our wonderful nonprofit partners. Many of them could not attend today, but they're here in spirit. And we just wanted to really celebrate Trash Punks, Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful, and South Bay Clean Creek Coalition. They've been leading the charge and honestly, they've been kind of the heart and soul of our waterways. So really just want to pay a tribute to them. And do we, I hope we have a video. So there we do. Okay, excellent. So I'm going to play a little clip that, just honoring what these wonderful heroes have been providing for the city.
Hi, my name is Justin Imamura, and I'm the founder and president of the Trash Punks. And we started here in San Jose, California, where I'm born and raised. Since 2017, we've been cleaning up our waterways ever since. It's been great.
Hi, my name is Deb Kramer. I'm the founder and executive director of Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful. We connect people to Coyote Creek by hosting creek cleanups. We also have our Biblets events and other educational activities.
Hi, I'm Steve Holmes with South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition. Our primary goal is to remove all of the trash from the waterways so that we see larger returns of the Chinook salmon. And in this case, we have a beaver dam right over here, so seeing the beaver coming back into the waterway.
Partnering with the City of San Jose Environmental Service Department and all those that are involved have been amazing. Working with them just makes everything so easy. There's no red tape. We tell them when we're doing a cleanup event, and we do it.
Through this partnership with ESD, Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful has been able to expand our reach within the whole of the city of San Jose. So it's not just about Coyote Creek, but helping to make people aware of all of our watersheds and what they have to offer. Additionally, Environmental Services has continued to offer not only grants, but to seek community grants between community-based organizations and the city of San Jose.
This is kind of a unique situation because I talk with a lot of my friends that are in other areas of the country, there's really not a strong bond between, you know, city agencies and then small NGOs such as ourself. But what we've found is that ESD supports us when we have issues such as funding or we need access to resources to help us to get the job done along these waterways.
Through our partnership with the Environmental Services Department, we've been able to connect over 10,000 people through our creek cleanups in the last 10 years. Over those 200 creek cleanups, we've removed nearly 1 million pounds of trash, and we're just so excited to keep that commitment going between the two organizations.
All right. Actually, I think, thanks again to our creek partners, and this concludes our presentation.
Thanks for the presentation and all of the progress. It's really exciting. I know we've all been tracking it pretty closely, and I appreciate your tribute to the three nonprofit organizations you just highlighted in the video. I know, I think we've probably all spent a fair bit of time out in the waterways with these organizations in recent years, and they, they just do tremendous work. Including, I want to thank Steve and South Bay Clean Creeks came out this weekend for quite an epic cleanup along the Guadalupe River and at Columbus Park with some 300 volunteers, and they helped lead that effort. Tony, why don't we go to public comment if we have any?
I have no cards for this item.
Oh, great. Okay. Sounds good. Back to the council. Yeah, maybe I'll kick off with a couple of questions, then turn to colleagues. Want to thank staff, all of you gave the presentation, I know many others. I had the opportunity to drop by briefly just last week as, as many members of our team were meeting with representatives from the water board. And I could see even, I wasn't there long, but even from those representatives, I think a recognition that the way we've come together cross-functionally, as, as our city manager says, and I think we all truly believe, one city team, and been focused and strategic and followed through something that, that they seemed impressed with. And you all can probably speak to that better than I can, given that you spend a lot more time with them. But I think it, it shows with now in 97, being at 97.7% trash load reduction and on track to be 100% compliant by the end of the year, which is a huge milestone. You all highlighted the achievements, but just the amount of trash we've taken out of the waterways and then the prevention investments we've made are, are really incredible. And obviously, we all have a responsibility in city, but also county, state, water district. We have got to end this crisis of unsheltered homelessness that makes this so difficult. And that's something I was glad to have the opportunity to share a few reflections on with our water board folks. So my questions are, there were just two that came to mind as I was looking at the materials. One, maybe for Jeff and Rajini is around, as I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when it comes to private land enforcement, there's, there were, I think it was 234 properties identified that need to become compliant with our trash load reduction efforts. How do we ensure that compliance? And what is the, bless you, what is the timeline for bringing them into compliance?
So thank you for the question, Mayor. So with regards to getting them into compliance, one of the main criteria, it's a new, new requirement in the permit. And the first criteria is that they have to be connected to our storm sewer system. And then the second is assessing the property to, to, based on a certain criteria that we in, not just with City of San Jose, it's throughout the state. It's a, a trash assessment that we do. And so what we do to get them into compliance, we work with the property owner. We have notified them, we've sent letters, and then they, we've had an open, you know, presentation just to understand, to explain to them what does it mean to maintain compliance. And if they're unable to do that, they're allowed to install what Matthew showed, these small trash capture devices. I mean, ultimately, the goal is to prevent trash entering into our storm sewer system. So that's the ultimate thing. We, last year, we did modify our Muni codes to increase enforcement fines, so we did do that. So with that, these are all the things that are in our toolkit. But so far, property owners are wanting to do the right thing, which is a positive thing. So.
Great. I'm glad to hear that. And then just turning to- And then, just turning to, I think Olympia probably on this one, we have now established no return zones. I think at the time of the report, it was 16 miles. Now, I think we're maybe 20 or maybe a little more. I know we're continuing to expand those as we resolve encampments, clean up an area, start to restore the habitat, and then it's really important that we prevent reencampment. Olympia, can you just share a little bit of what you and your team are seeing out in the field in terms of reencampment? Is it, has it been challenging to preserve those areas and keep them clear over time? And then, I think I have a follow-up, but why don't I let you answer that first?
So, thank you for the question, Mayor. So, in terms of reencampment, when we first establish a no encampment zone, people sometimes will often come back because they're not aware that it is a no encampment zone. So, we tend to see reencampments the first 60, 90 days be a little higher. That's because we have to educate folks about this is the sign, this is what this means, these are the areas you can't be in. After that, it tends to just trail off. And then, usually what happens, maybe a new person that just didn't realize they've encamped in a no encampment zone. But we find that after a while, then it gets lower and lower, and there are fewer places in a no encampment zone that we need to abate.
Okay. And then, I assume now with the Neighborhood Quality Life Unit, that these encampment zones, like all others, like the ones around interim sites, will be part of a routine?
Correct.
Schedule. Yeah, and I see Lee nodding his head as well. Okay, so then, in my view, the really challenging question, because we have not completely ended unsheltered homelessness in our city yet, that we've made some real progress. We've been focused on the, is it 26 miles that are priority of the 147, six, what, 140?
I was going lower, 130.
130? Huh, we lost some waterways.
It could be 147.
I thought we were at 140 at one point. All right, whatever. We have over 100 miles of waterways in the City of San Jose. And we've been focused on the 26 miles that have been most impacted and that the Water Board has asked us to focus on. Let's just be blunt about this. If we resolve those encampments, establish no encampment zones, don't allow reencampment, that's great, but we're likely to see a significant number of people migrate to other parts of the waterways. So, how are we monitoring that? And how do we prevent those areas from becoming as degraded as the first 26 miles are? And what is our longer, what do we think is the next phase of this work? Assuming we get to our 100% this year, what comes next year?
Oh, that's a good question. I thought Lee was going to jump in first. Did you want to go first, Lee, and then I'll go?
I'm happy to follow your lead, Olympia.
So, we have noticed, Mayor, as we have cleared areas along those areas that had the most impact from encampments, people tend to find new places to want to live. So, what we've done is we've started to map where people are, immediately provide services so that we don't find that people get completely entrenched in those new areas and start to educate folks. We're also working on what our long-term plan will be, because what we don't want is to take folks from 126 miles and reestablish encampments in a new 26 miles, right? Many of those areas are areas that we don't typically go down a lot on a regular basis. So, what we've done is we've started to monitor and go what we call the ring around the city. The encampments used to be kind of locating what we call more of the central core of the city along our waterways. Now, we're starting to see people say, okay, I'll just go out further, and we call it the ring around the city. So, we've started to map those areas, and we're thinking about what our long-term strategy will be, such as do we establish no encampment zones where we already don't have people established? Because we don't want people to just move further out. How do we make sure that we're not simply having people move from city property, not even onto valley water property, but now going to areas that are more privately owned, which takes a lot more time and technical assistance for us to provide to those property owners? So, I would say more to come, and it's something that we are working on.
Yeah, and just a few things to follow up. Thank you, Olympia. See, you know, one thing that we don't often show here too is just the data work that Olympia and her team, John, PRNS, Eric in Housing, and Police Department are doing with the migration patterns of our unhoused. And so, we've got a lot of data of, you know, where those folks go that we can use, you know, Eric and Cupid use for additional outreach for those folks to go. We can make additional touches and provide additional services. Would say, we're in the position now as a city, for the first time, dealing with this where we have capacity as well. So, as we saw with the Columbus Park abatement and the acceptance rate of us actually being able to move those people indoors and give them services. So, we can be very, you know, tactical with the data. I would say on a larger note though, the direction from all of you to look at our emergency interim, emergency interim housing just program in general and look for efficiencies. And that's bringing down costs so that we have additional capacity to add to the system. And then, making it in addition to just being more efficient so that we save money is being more effective in that partnership with the county and a coordinated system. So, we're moving people out of our system through a much more permanent solution so that we have the additional capacity to continue to work with our population and bring them indoors. And so, that's going to be really important work from tactical, which is, you know, what the teams on the ground are doing, all the way up to our partnership with the county and the work that's been directed, you know, to the Housing Department that we need to do to get to that kind of next level.
Yeah, thank you both for those answers. And I couldn't agree more about the importance of integrating our system with the counties and getting more throughput and then driving the kind of efficiencies in the existing interim system that we've been talking about over the last couple of years. I guess I'll just say, on the one hand, I'm very proud of the work we've done as a city. I think you all have done a tremendous job, and with the council's support, we've added more interim housing units this year than any other city in California, and it shows. We have had a roughly stable number of individuals experiencing homelessness. It has been in that 5,500, 6,000 range, just for my colleagues' context. But we have gone from 84% of those roughly 6,000 people living outside in tents and vehicles to, we think by the end of this year, under 50%. That is a, that is more movement than any other city I'm aware of in the state, any other big city. And it's because we've added thousands of beds over the last five years, with 1,000, over 1,000 being added this year alone. And that's what's leading us, where we have a roughly stable population or number of people experiencing homelessness, to get to our goal of everybody being able to have a bed, a dignified indoor place to be. That being said, 50% or a little under 50% is great. It still leaves a couple thousand people outside, and we don't have the money to just keep building endlessly. And so, the system has to get more efficient, we have to maximize utilization, we have to get more throughput to County PSH and Home Rebound and other outcomes that are more stable for people beyond interim housing. And the ultimate goal, this is going to be very challenging, I just want to flag this now so we're not being hand-wavy about it, we will need, the Clean Water Act is very clear, you can't pollute any of the waterways. This is the 26 miles we're focused on right now, but in the, our time together on this council, I believe, we're going to need to get to a place where there is just a no encampment zone along all the waterways. You will not be allowed to camp on the waterways. And we're going to have to get to a place where we can do that in a way that doesn't just send 2,000 people into the neighborhoods, as we've talked about. So, I just want us to be clear-eyed that we've made huge progress. All the credit to staff for doing an amazing job with executing the current plan, but it is an incremental step toward where we need to go that is going to be harder and more ambitious, and we don't have the resources to do it exactly how we did Phase 1. We will need to look at safe sleeping, congregate shelter, and that system integration with the county, all of the above to be able to offer an alternative to the waterways, to the folks who are out there today. Okay. Let me, so, great work to the team, thank you. Let me turn now to Councilmember Ortiz.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I want to also thank staff. I know that this is an extremely important function of the city, but it's also a moving target. And as, you know, the mayor said, you make one area a no encampment zone, and they go down the way or, you know, vice versa. And then, I myself am dealing with, you know, unhoused, unprivate property in my district, which Olympia, you know, and it continues to be an issue, especially when we have concerned residents who want something to be done, and we just don't have the authority or capacity to follow through with that. And so, you know, since we were talking about no encampment zones, I know, Olympia, you know this, but there's the property in my district near the Mayfair Community Center where there has been a lot of issues. You know, we had an incident at the Mayfair Community Center from a resident of the unhoused community that caused a lot of concerns. I wanted to ask, have we, do we have an understanding of like what a cost estimate would be for an expansion of the no encampment zone? Are we going to be able to expand that? Or are we essentially stuck at the amount of no encampment zones we have now?
Thank you for the question. So, the initial direction that we received from council was to establish no encampment zones near our EIH sites, around our safe parking, and then along the waterway areas that we're clearing. So, we always assess, keep a list of areas that if we look at expanding kind of no encampment zones, what that would look like and how we would manage them. So, we have a team, a pretty small team, that's managing over 20, it's going to be almost 27 miles of waterway that we need to clear, plus all of our future current EIHs and safe parking sites. So, it's something we can definitely come back with or discuss more in depth offline about what that would look like to add other sites.
Sure. I mean, that sounds good. I'm definitely interested in having one near the Mayfair Community Center. I've heard concerns about, from staff and youth, that they don't feel safe, and I want to make sure we're responding to that. So, hopefully, we could have that conversation during next year's budget. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Would love to have that conversation. Let me go to Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much, and thank you, excuse me, thank you for all your work. You know, I was, I was thinking, gosh, what a difference a year make, what a difference two years makes. I mean, we are in such a better place today than we had been. And, you know, it's, it's been a lot of hard work, it's been a lot of push and pull, but you've, you've done it. So, I, I know that we have still a ways to go, but, but how great is that? And, you know, I know that it was with a lot of effort that you got to where we are today, so thank you so much for that. I think I'd like to emphasize a little bit about how we're possibly going to get to no encampment zones in all of the waterways, because I think that it becomes too easy just to kind of, oh, I'll just move down the ways or whatever. And, and we have to think about how we work on prevention, because once it's established, whether it's, you know, public property or private property, it costs us more to eliminate than it does, or to, you know, like abate it or whatever, than it is to figure out ways to prevent. So, as we have these discussions, you know, I think that it's a big lift to get to all waterways. But I also think that, you know, if there are some, you know, sort of ways to bring prevention into this, we might be better off. And I think that, you know, it's a little bit difficult on private property because, you know, you can't just go in there and, you know, do anything without permission. So, I think that working with private property, not all of the 140 or whatever miles is city-owned, some of it is water district-owned, some of it is city-owned, somebody, some of it is somebody else owns it. So, I think that that gives a different level of complexity. But I think that working together to try to find a preventative way might be a way to go. The other thing I wanted to encourage my colleagues is creating greater awareness in our community. A few years ago, I piloted the Adopt a Storm Drain program. And I will say that this year, thanks, the Environmental Services Department took it over, and it's been blossoming in other areas of San Jose. I will say that, I looked at the map, if you just put in, you know, Adopt a Storm Drain San Jose, you will get to a GIS map that shows where the adoptees are. So, I'm giving everyone, all of my colleagues, a year's head start to be able to compete for the top number of Adopt a Storm Drains in your area. There are 30,000 storm drains in the City of San Jose. We each have, oh, I don't know, let's say approximately 30, I mean, 3,000. So, you know, there's plenty of room to, you know, get out there. It's a great way to bring education to, to our kids, and, you know, they could, in different schools, you know, can adopt the corner storm drain. It might be something that your office may want to take on, but it is now housed in Environmental Services. It is citywide, and I urge you to just check it out, check it out. It's a nice thing to let people know what they can do to, you know, like help the environment and, you know, learn a little bit about stormwater runoff. We used to call it, you know, flows to the bay, and we used to have it stenciled with the water district. By the way, the water district would love to partner with you. If you want to do some kind of event in your area, they're a great partners because this helps the waterways in general and creates that education and awareness. So, I want to thank the entire team. I look forward to continuing to work with you. And I would like to go ahead and accept the annual report, and I guess we have to adopt the resolution, is that correct? I'd move that. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Let's go to Councilmember Dwan.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I was just saying, thank you. You guys are doing an incredible job. From 2016, we went from 500 tons of garbage, now we're up to 2,000. Now, we don't want to see that number continue to rise, that, we don't have to finance the resources. And I agree with the mayor, somewhere, we're going to have to, no encampment zone, period. We have to secure our waterways to protect our environment for the future generation. But I do have a few questions for you, but I want to specifically thank you, Olivia, for putting up that sign there on Loop Drive. And sure enough, when you put up that sign, I haven't seen garbage there. Before that, every single week is just truckloads. But anyway, that's it. The question I have is, given the rising costs, especially associated with the unsheltered residents, population, in the Provision C-17, how should budget allocation be prioritized? In order to lower cost, higher impact on intervention, that can be scale? Lee? Lee? She's reaching out to you.
Sorry, just responding to a public safety issue. Can you repeat the question, Councilmember?
Oh, sorry. Given the rising costs, especially associated with unsheltered population, how should budget allocation be prioritized?
Yeah, I mean, I think the most important, which is what I said before, is, you know, this council has taken extreme measures and allocations over the last three years to budget this work. And so, the results that staff has talked about and the mayor has talked about are a result of those allocations. I would say like anything, the direction that you gave for us to look at, are those programs being efficient and effective, is going to be very key. With the budget pictures over the next few years, we're going to be looking to make sure those programs are meeting intent, and where there are cost savings, that we can reinvest some of those savings back into additional capacity on the backend or any other allocations that you guys deem necessary for the community. So, without additional revenue on the table, that work is going to be very central for you guys expanding out those results and outcomes.
Thank you, Lee. I'll sum it up in the sense that when there's an extraordinary situation, we have to make extraordinary decision in order to mitigate and find the best solution to support our communities whom we use their tax dollars to make sure they have a clean, safe living environment. I have a question for the Deputy Chief, Aaron Freyler, if you want to come down.
So, as a former fire captain, you all know, you know, I know that every time we go to a small or even large fire, there's an enormous amount of carcinogen that flow down onto our waterways or storm drain, if you will. And I know that the Fire Department is working on purchasing a more environmentally friendly foam, if you will, Class A and Class B, which is the AFF for those, it's aqueous firefighting foam. So, can you elaborate on that a little bit more, Chief?
Yeah, no problem. So, currently, yeah, like you said, we currently carry two classes of foam, which is Class A, which would be for vegetation or rubbish fire. Class B would be for fuels or any type of liquid. In 2019, we actually removed all our floor In 2019, we actually removed all our fluorinated Class B foam from all our apparatus, and went to a compliant non-fluorinated Class B foam. But to keep up with standards, we're actually now looking at a combination of Class A, Class B foam, which is also an organic material that can accomplish both Class A and Class B fires.
Thank you. And as we purchase better foam, there will be costs in training and practice. And then perhaps even on the memorandum stated here, that cleanup crew to ensure effective communication and discharge management. Does the Fire Department looking to ask for more funding because of the training, the cost, the implementation, every single fire that we, and resource, obviously, when you go to a small or large fire?
Yeah, good question, Councilmember. This is not my area of expertise, so I'll have to give back to you on that comment.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll look forward to hear back from you, and I'll yield my time.
Thanks, Councilmember. All right, I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you all. Thank you again to staff for all the great work. All right, on to item 8.2, Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER. There is no staff presentation. Let me turn to colleagues.
Public comment?
Sure, I was gonna entertain a motion, but go ahead. Do we have a public comment?
Brian Darby.
All right.
Thank you again, real quick. There is a public, ah, sorry, public, such a public discussion, I guess, in that sense. And so I wanted to offer, a lot of us really want to help do what we can. We can't, some of us can't volunteer. I wish I could volunteer with some of the things the mayor puts forward. I just don't have that much use of my hands anymore, so I can't really do a lot of that. I would think I would try to help in other ways. I tend to write detailed emails, and to be quite honest, when we put forward, I spend a lot of time on it, and I never really, I get some automated responses. And why I say it in this particular situation is that a lot of us want to help with the problem with housing, and we would like some response back. We would like to have, we would like to have some, at least a response, you know, at least somebody to say, never mind, sorry.
Back to council.
Thank you. Coming back to the council, Councilmember Kamai.
Thank you so much. There's a lot of information in this report, and I just want to thank the staff for a lot of the details and information. And I'd like to go ahead and move staff recommendation and accept the report.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
I do, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up, Councilmember. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would staff please speak to the metric or indicator suggest that we're moving the needle on systemic issue like homelessness or housing insecurity?
Thank you, Councilmember. Eric Solivon, Housing Director, to the question of whether or not this report specifically, since it's just an outputs report to HUD on the programs and fund utilizations, it doesn't speak to the broader goal of the progress that we've made in addressing homelessness and the work that we fund in homelessness regarding outreach through the HUD dollars. Globally, you know, as discussed earlier in the meeting, we've made a substantial amount of progress in terms of total amount of beds being brought online, clearing the waterways, so we're certainly moving the needle. This report is more designed around how do we just report out on our funding and kind of checkbox us with HUD on this annual report?
Thank you. Given the current state of federal funding, how are we preparing for potential reduction in federal HUD funding in the future years?
So there's a lot of ongoing conversation now around federal funding globally. MBA 33 from the June report sort of limited, put a brief pause, so we can best assess what are the new conditions coming down related to our grant funds. And then going forward, Jim Shannon and I, and I know other directors as well, have been discussing what-if scenarios. If all the funding somehow goes away, if, as we've kind of learned this morning, there's a government shutdown, and they don't further any federal funding going forward, we'll have to come up with scenarios, working with the city manager's office.
Thank you. In term of homelessness response, how are we coordinating federal program, local, state, and county to avoid the duplication or gaps?
So I'll take that part, question in sort of three parts. First, in our work with the county specifically on utilization of federal funds, there's very little duplication. Because the county's overall federal funding streams that we receive, so the duplicate programs, Hopewell, CDBG, CSG, et cetera, they receive very little funds, because they only receive funds as an allocation to their unincorporated areas. So our general funding levels are higher, and therefore we utilize more of the funds. Two, to overall coordination with the state, again, separate buckets of funding related to state allocations versus our city-county, because we are an entitlement city, we receive these funds directly, and so our programs don't generally overlap. As we look at best utilization of the funds going forward, if there are reductions in the overall levels of funding, or if the city decides, because of the new restrictions, we cannot expense the funds in accordance with those requirements, then we'll have to consider what the global impacts would be to three primary areas. One is our overall homelessness response. Two, the work and the funding that we apply to housing production. And then three, the work we do on housing preservation. Because some of the home dollars that we have, as we're looking to expend out those funds, are gonna go into areas to preserve seniors who are living in mobile home parks, getting them in new mobile home units. And those types of funds, where traditionally our Measure E-type dollars do not extend to those program limits.
Well, thank you for the answer, and we're so glad to have you in the Housing Department, and keep up the good work. Thanks. I'll yield my time.
Thanks, Councilmember. All right, I don't see any other hands. Tony, let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. We're on to open forum, which is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any city business that was not on today's agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Brian, come on down.
Hello, okay. This is the main reason I came down. I felt compelled, very much so. I wept about this. Three people were murdered last week in San Jose. I think people are aware of that. Terrell Lynn Taylor, Jessica Lynn Laurie, and Max Chavez Ryan were their names. I just thought it was important to say that here, and that we remember them. Maybe I'm wrong. Am I wrong? That's why I came, because this is the most important thing. This lady begged for help. The gentleman, the person that killed him has extensive history of violence, and he was let go, you know, again and again. I can tell you, if you want to find an issue that's frustrating people in this city, it's that. And I mean, there's been progress made, great to the mayor's efforts and to the police. This is all of us, not just the police or the mayor. It's easy to blame the judge. I don't know what the answer is. I do know that three people were killed. To me, that's important. When that 80-year-old gentleman was mugged, and he had a stroke, I mean, when they drove through his window, that's important. It is important. And it should upset us. Normally, I don't get frustrated like this, but it is. It's important. If we don't remember this, everything else you do is irrelevant. Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful afternoon.